Let's call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Smith.
Here.
Gusterson.
Here.
Perry.
Here.
Nguyen.
Here.
Brabner.
Here.
Mayor.
I'm here. Our invocation and pledge will be led by our city attorney, Mr. David Connor. Please rise.
Father, we thank you for everything you give us, and we thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. Ask that you bless each person on this board and council, give them the wisdom to make the decisions that are right for this community. Father, we ask that you bless the citizens, business owners and operators and people in this community as well. Father, we thank you for those people that protect us, the freedoms that we exercise, and, Father, we just thank you for loving us. We thank you for taking care of us. We thank you for the weather that we have today, the seasons of the year that reminds us in all seasons of life and in all things that you are in control, and we thank you for that. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Ask for the approval of amendments for the previous meeting work session, August 18th, 2025, and the regular meeting, August 18th, 2025. Are there any corrections? Not. I stand approved as written. Reports of committees. Ms. Gaines.
No report.
Mr. Connor.
No further reports, Mayor.
Chief Barber.
No report, Mayor.
Chief Pugh, I know you've got one.
Well, I was just, excuse me, going to remind everyone about the 5K, but I know that's going to come up in your announcements here in a little bit.
Shannon.
No report.
Debbie, you have anything? Kirk, Planning Commission.
Nothing to report.
Carl, Junior Counsel.
Nothing to report.
Shane, Sports Association.
Got a meeting tomorrow night here. I'm sorry, moved to make next Wednesday. My bad. Thank you.
Sorry, Steve, I'm going to pass you up. Mary.
Hi, I'm Brooke Walsh, and Three Mill has helped us fund the media center to get flexible seating, to accommodate students in a wide variety of lessons that they do in here. They also have made it possible for us to purchase books for all of our students, faculty and staff for One Book One School this year, and help us fund the supplies for our culminating day lessons.
Once again, Three Mills is, the Three Mill Committee is the group that spends the money that our additional three mills of ad valorem tax collects. And I can say that at the end of the school year, we budgeted $1.6 million for next, for this school year right now. So that should leave us with very little cash in the bank, except for the new proceeds that will come in. But that's humongous when you're looking at this committee being able to spend an additional $1.6 million on top of what the school board already provides for our kids. And you can see the benefit in our kids and the grades that they are, the grades that they're receiving, the ACT scores, the, all the different accolades that they're getting. You're seeing your, your children that are not at grade level get up to grade level. So this money is able to be used for all different levels of students, and I am proud to be a part of that committee. So Three Mill matters.
Thank you, Ms. Brabner. We'll open up the floor for public participation. If you'd like to address the council. Now is your opportunity. Please come to the podium, hit the speaker button, and give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Justina Burgett. I'm a resident of Spanish Fort. Hate public speaking. The point of government is protection, right? My fellow neighbors and city councilmen and women, I am asking the city of Spanish Fort to protect its citizens and create an opt-out policy for smart utility meters, even for those who may already have one. These have been rolled out on houses without most people knowing what these are and what they do. You, members of the council, most likely already have these on your homes, too. Anytime that you hear the title "smart" in relation to technologies, think data collection. When you cook, when you use an AC, when you turn on your, turn on or off your light before bed, when you are home or when you are not home. It's not smart, it's creepy, and it's making money off of you. We pay for a service, and they're spying on us to make money. My guess is that I am one of the few who have received this letter, a letter from Riviera Utilities forcing the installation of an AMI smart meter, because so far I have said no. Now, I cannot, or my power gets shut off, even though we have children in the house and we pay our bills. AMI stands for Advanced Metering Infrastructure, and it refers to the system that includes smart meters and communication networks that enable two-way communication between the utility company and the customer's meter wirelessly. Currently, ours is a one-way communication system. This two-way system allows for the remote reading of meters, real-time monitoring of energy consumption and data analysis. Per the letter, I am not allowed to opt out. However, I am allowed to have the meter relocated at my expense. The customer is responsible for all costs associated with relocating the Riviera Utilities costs, whatever those may be, and the cost associating with the hiring of an electrician to perform the installation. Real-time data collection, network hacking and exploitation of any data that has been gathered are real concerns, not just where the meter is located. These companies are looking for growth and profits for their shareholders in the name of upgrades, while your citizens are forced to pay for it. Other cities, other states have options. Again, Riviera Utilities has chosen to have no opt-out for their wireless data collecting smart meters. And when more than 24 states and many hometowns have opted out policies for these meters with reading fees of around $12. City authority is the main option here in preventing the forced installation of these meters. This is absolutely the place for the city of Spanish Fort to step in and protect its citizens. These meters, their de facto monopolies, are not the law. You are. They are data collection services, devices, being put on houses by a company from Foley. The city of Foley owns Riviera Utilities. Our private information of basic household usage doesn't even go to our own city. As the city of Spanish Fort, you have the right and the obligation and the authority to say no to this. Find the resolution that you like best in the list of cities that I have provided, and I will hand to you when I'm done, or find your own and enact the same legislation to protect your citizens' privacy and sovereignty. By the time Riviera Utilities' given extortion date has ran out, which per their letter seems to be October 31st, 2025, if not before that. The precedence has been set. Basically, half of the country seems to have already protected its citizens, and we are behind. Provided, in some envelopes and folders, I have more information on data and health concerns, copies of my "comply or your power is shut off" letters, 27 different resolutions for the state of Michigan alone as possible templates for you, and other information on smart meter opt-out policies.
Oh, thank, thank you very much. You got some more? Okay. I would put them in everybody's box. Be the best way to do it.
And I believe that's pretty much it, unless there's something else that I am supposed to be waiting for from you.
Thank you for bringing it to us. Let us reach out to Riviera, see what we can discuss with Stephen Sullivan, the government relations gentleman. It may be something that we incorporate our state legislators and public service commission on.
From what I have.
Demand that somebody moving forward in an opt-out thing, I don't quite understand the logic Riviera is doing here.
Right.
But let us look into it. Our, our attorney is aware of the situation, and we will be hitting the ground tomorrow morning with it, trying to figure out some answers for you.
I appreciate you looking into that. Thank you.
Anybody else on the council? Or David?
Would have one quick question. Councilmember Brabner provided some information to me yesterday that you had provided to her. And so I've taken a look at it. Is your biggest concern with the, the data collection itself? Or are you concerned about this issue involving electromagnetic fields and?
I think that there are a lot of concerns that are out there that the country really seems to be divided on. I have tried really hard not to take it into a realm of labeled negative I-don't-knows. I've tried to keep it really logical. And to me, it seems like if half of the country is split on this, and it's better to protect your citizens from a seven, annual revenue of $70 million company, like, I can't go up against this company much further than beyond you guys, if not the state. And other than that, they're just going to do whatever they want. They're going to take our data, and they're going to make money off of it. And it's theft.
Your, your biggest concern is the use of, collection and use of data is your biggest concern?
I believe that the large, the most refined legal argument is the civil rights argument of, like, search and seizure, whether it is legal collection of data or not, from my understanding. I have another letter in there, because it was originally like four pages, so I tried to shorten a lot of things. I do have concerns over the health aspect of it, but, I mean, I understand that, that there are legal arguments, and then there are concerns to be had. And I think that there is a ration for a variety of concerns when it comes to this, and the country really seems to be divided on the topic completely. And I think if the country is so divided on whether or not they're safe, or if we need to keep looking into them, or something like that, a lot of those are from, like, 2010, 2011, 2016. It seems like this is just now a thing that's hitting Alabama. So I think there's just a variety of things. And like I said, in the packet, to not take up a whole lot of time on the podium, I put a lot of it in the packet for you guys to dive, dive a little bit deeper. Some websites are on there. Tried to not make them seem weird. But yeah, I think that there are legal technicalities to be concerned with.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, under announcements, join us September 13th, 2025, at Scenic Mayor State Park, located at 5200 Battleship Parkway for this year's Fire Prevention 5K. Registration is now open. Click below. You can sign up at the Spanish Fort Fire Rescue website. Why do we put click below on an announcement? So. On Sunday, September 28th, 2025, the Mobile Pops will be performing at the Spanish Fort Community Center at 6:00 PM. Be showcased by the Spanish Fort Garden Club at 5:00 PM prior to the concert. There's no old business on a new business. We have a public hearing on ordinance number 719, 2025, and ordinance amending ordinance number 5196 of the city of Spanish Fort. David?
Mayor, this is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow for an expansion of the use of automobile parts sales, except used parts enclosed within a structure in the B3 general business district with Planning Commission approval. A copy of the proposed amendment to the Table 6.4, the table of permitted uses attached as Exhibit A. The Planning Commission held a public. Four and M1, and that, that, that there are some uses in B4 that were of concern for some applicants applying for the use, this use at a certain location. It was determined that B3 with Planning Commission approval would be an appropriate location, and so that's why they're making this recommendation for an amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Discussion from the council? I'll open up the public hearing. If you'd like to speak, please give us your name and address. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now closed. Any discussion from the council? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 719, 2025.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Gusterson.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Nguyen.
Yes.
Brabner. Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is adopted. We'll also have a public hearing on ordinance number 720, 2025, and ordinance amending ordinance number 598-2021 of the city of Spanish Fort, Alabama, as amended to sign ordinance. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is a proposed amendment to the sign ordinance to allow for one digital electronic sign in the business and industrial zoning districts B1, B2, B3, B4, B5, and M1. This would allow for a digital electronic sign to be placed on the ground sign allowed, allowed for each business located in that district. Subject to certain limitations, that their, the images remain static, except when they're allowed to change on every hour of the day. For example, at 6:00 AM, they can change one time. 7:00 AM, they can change one time throughout the day. The idea was that this would allow for multiple changes on signs throughout the day, but would keep, assuming that these signs catch on, keep a situation where you're driving down a road and it becomes a distraction because of flashing signs up and down the highway. The change has to be done with point, in a .5 seconds or less. There has to be a light sensor that automatically adjusts the sign based on ambient light. There cannot be, be operated at a light intensity of less than .3 foot candles of ambient light measured from a distance of 150 feet. If there's a malfunction, it has to either freeze or go to a black screen. They're not authorized within 100 feet of a residential district. They cannot be used for outdoor advertising, for off-premise advertising. And there are limitations. It has to be, again, continuous. There could be no streaming, optical illusion of streaming, any type of movement or graphics. It has to be a static sign. And we also included, because the city may, either at this facility or other locations, to assist with advertising for the community, provide for a community sign that can be used for, for assistance. The city sign, if it's constructed. In order to allow for community advertising of events, but also things like amber alerts, hurricane notices, road closings, different things, to allow and inform the community for those public interest purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Any discussion from the council? Once again, I'll open up the public hearing. If you'd like to speak, please. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now closed. Discussion. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 720-2025. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Smith. Gusterson.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Nguyen.
Yes.
Brabner.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, the ordinance is adopted. We'll have another public hearing on ordinance number 721, 2025, and ordinance amending ordinance number 5196 of the city of Spanish Fort, changing the zoning classification of certain property located at 9917-A Spanish Fort Boulevard from R1 to B4. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this property is located at the northwest corner of US Highway 31 and Highway 181. It's presently occupied by the former CVS Pharmacy at that location. We have an applicant that has requested that that property be rezoned to B4, a major business district in order to allow for the sale of new automobile parts within a structure. This ordinance request or application request is what preceded or caused the Planning Commission to make a recommendation that the zoning table be amended to allow for these types of sales in B3 with Planning Commission approval. And at that meeting, the Planning Commission, based on the number and type of uses that could be allowed in B4, was not comfortable with putting a B4 zoning classification at that location, but did feel comfortable that B3 was appropriate. And so the Planning Commission, in accordance with the zoning ordinance, allows for them to forward a recommendation of a more restrictive zoning classification. So they recommended the property be rezoned to B3. Since that meeting, it's my understanding, based on conversation with Mr. Rains, that the applicant is also in agreement that the property be rezoned to B3 based on their proposed amendment to the ordinance. And so in this case, Section 1 of the ordinance reads that the property, if approved by this ordinance, would be rezoned to B4. Planning Commission forwards a recommendation that it be rezoned to B3. Staff's recommendation and my recommendation would be that if you consider rezoning it, that it'd also be rezoned to B3. So after the public hearing, if you're inclined to approve the ordinance either as drafted with B4 or with B3 as an amendment, you will need to amend the ordinance before a motion to adopt is considered.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Any discussion from the council?
So to be clear, we'll need to call for an amendment, a motion to amend, and then we'll have a motion to approve the amended.
That's correct. If, after the public hearing, if you all decide that that's appropriate, it would be a motion to amend Section 1 and this ordinance to change, and Section 2 to change the zoning classification from B4 to B3, and be reflected the same way on the zoning map.
Any further discussion? I'll open up the public hearing. Please give us your name and address. Public hearing is now closed. Discussion from the council? Do I have a motion?
Motion to amend ordinance 721, 2025 to reflect B3 in, in first section there instead of B4. And in Section 2 as well.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Gusterson.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Nguyen.
Yes.
Brabner.
Yes.
Yes, do I motion to adopt 721, 2025 with the changes?
Motion to adopt ordinance 721, 2025 with the changes.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Gusterson.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Nguyen.
Yes.
Brabner. Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, the ordinance is adopted. I present Resolution 1546. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for professional services with Vizo Group, Inc. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, Vizo Group, Inc. has been doing the auditing and accounting services for the city of Spanish Fort at some time, and this is a continuation of that relationship. This authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Vizo Group to perform the city's audit, including the single audit for government programs for the amount of $33,040, and then an audit for the Cooperative Improvement District for the city of Spanish Fort Highway 98 and Highway, Highway 98 public facilities for $5,475, and the Cooperative Improvement District for the Highway 181 public facilities for $5,475. A copy of those agreements are attached exhibits.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 1546-2025.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Gusterson.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Nguyen.
Yes.
Brabner.
Yes.
Mayor.
Resolution is adopted. Like to present Resolution 1547, 2025, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for services between the city of Spanish Fort, Alabama and Thompson Engineering. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is proposed agreement with Thompson Engineering for the provision of professional design services and construction administration for the development of Phase 1 of Honor Park. A copy of the proposed contract and the terms and conditions, including the scope of work, is attached as exhibit. The cost of the proposed Phase 1 design services is $480,000.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. Discussion from the council?
Yes, I know we've got the, the charts over here showing the scope of work to be done. Will those be put on the website as well to show what's current? I know we've got the master plan there, but it would be a good idea for people to be able to access the. Push the initial set of Gomez money.
Becky, I would ask you to put that on there. Understand this is a bid, so the bid prices may dictate.
Do we wait to put that out till we have final figures? Because I'd hate to put something out that we have to take off of the plan.
That was my point.
Okay.
Exactly. I don't know if we really want to do that just at this point. I think you go to bid first. Let's see what we got, and then put it on the social media pages.
Okay.
Any other discussion on 1547, 2025? Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt 14, uh, Resolution 1547, 2025.
Second.
Any further discussion? And so the public will know this is coming from the Gomez grant. It's not coming from the city coffers. We've got a $3 million grant to build that park, which does include the engineering cost as part of it. So it's not out of the city coffers. It's from our grant. Okay? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Gusterson.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Nguyen.
Yes.
Brabner.
Yes.
Mayor.
Resolution is adopted. Like to present Resolution 1548, 2025, a resolution authorizing the mayor and chief of police to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city of Spanish Fort Police Department and Southwest Alabama Regional Highway Safety Office. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is a proposed grant between the city of Spanish Fort and South Alabama Regional Highway Safety Office for the provision of salary and benefits for overtime traffic, safety enforcement and other equipment and costs associated with certain programs, including selective traffic enforcement program, the hotspot impaired driving enforcement program, the click-it-or-ticket Memorial Day enforcement program, and the drive sober or get pulled over Labor Day enforcement program. This allows for reimbursement of expenses related to that program by the city.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. Discussion from the council? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1548, 2025. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Gusterson.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Nguyen.
Yes.
Brabner.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, resolution is adopted. Like to present Resolution 1549, 2025, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Spanish Fort and Sawgrass Consulting. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is a proposed agreement with Sawgrass Consulting, LLC for the provision of design and construction services related to the construction of the Highway 31 connection and extension with Eastern Shore Boulevard at the Eastern Shore Center. This proposed contract for services is in the amount of $738,112, which is the cost of design, construction, oversight, inspection, et cetera. A copy of the overall cost estimate for that work and for that project is attached as an exhibit. The overall cost estimate is a little bit over $7 million. The Baldwin County Commission, as part of their 30-Q program, has agreed to fund and pay for half of the cost of construction, including design work associated with that project. And so they would be responsible ultimately for half of the cost of this project and half the design work as it goes forward.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. Discussion from the council? Here again is another project that we're funding using other sources. We're able to use the cooperative improvement funding to pay for this where it does not come out of your, your general fund. So that's, that's a good thing. Any other discussion on this item? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 1549-2025.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Gusterson.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Nguyen.
Yes.
Brabner.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, resolution is adopted. Like to present Resolution 1550, 2025, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Spanish Fort and Sawgrass Consulting. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this proposed agreement with Sawgrass Consulting to assist in roadway evaluation, data collection, GIS coordination and, and mapping for the purpose of providing an evaluation of streets within the city of Spanish Fort to determine their priority for maintenance. for maintenance, resurfacing, or other, uh, projects related there, too. This is something the city does on an annual basis to determine which streets need to be paved in which order, and also to assist in grant funding or other, uh, project application funding with the state of Alabama and other agencies. A copy of the scope of services attached exhibit A to the agreement, and the total amount of the contract service is $79,400.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Discussion from the council?
Do they also oversee when the roads are paved that they're done? I mean, are they the, the overseers of that?
That, no. When we go to bid for the project, yes. That's not part of this contract. For example, the one that we're starting this week, that's being, uh, overseen by GMC.
And do they oversee the paving of the roads?
If they handle the bid, it's not guaranteed they'd be handling- (inaudible) Contract. That doesn't cover it here. So part of that contract will be overseeing the project.
So this is strictly identifying the needs.
Absolutely.
Ranking the needs, too, right?
They're gonna come in, I think there's 80 miles with streets in the city, rings of bells, number 79.8.
Yeah, this one-
I think there's 79.8 miles that they're gonna come in and rate every street in the way, as y'all know, and so everybody else will know, that they rate every street we have in the city, and they tell the council the streets that need to be paved. That takes politics out of it completely.
This basically replaces the company that we were using, the independent company that was doing it before, that first getting somebody that, local to do this, a little bit better than what we were getting. Same, same contract, just a different person.
And, and the roads that start tomorrow, does that also include the section up at Spanish Main?
It does. All right, any other discussion on this item? Uh, do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution 1550, 2025.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Winn?
Yes.
Bradner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, resolution is adopted. Like to introduce resolution 1553, 2025, a resolution authorizing the Spanish Fort Police Chief to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Baldwin County Public School System and the Spanish Fort Police Department. Mr. Connor?
Uh, Mayor, the city of Spanish Fort already enters into agreement with the Baldwin County Board of Education, uh, and the Sheriff's Department for the provision of, uh, student resource officers at each, uh, school within the corporate limits of the city. Uh, the Baldwin County Board of Education has now asked the city to provide, uh, uniformed Apost certified officers to assist with metal detection, uh, at athletic events occurring at the schools within the city. Uh, this agreement would provide for those services, provide for compensation related to those services, uh, and, uh, outline the understanding and agree between the parties. And for the record, I do have a conflict on this item, as I mentioned in the work session, but I just presented for ease of, uh, understanding.
Any discussion from the council? As we discussed in our work session, do I have a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Winn?
Yes.
Bradner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, I have a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 1553, 2025.
Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Winn?
Yes.
Bradner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Resolution is adopted. Like to introduce resolution 1554, 2025, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a recycling services agreement between Solid Waste Disposal Authority of Baldwin County, Alabama, Inc., and the city of Spanish Fort, Alabama. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is a proposed agreement with the Solid Waste Disposal Authority of Baldwin County, Alabama, to provide recycling services to the citizens of the city of Spanish Fort. A copy of that agreement is attached, uh, with a few suggested changes that are outlined in red on that agreement. Uh, this agreement will provide those services for a fee of $10 per month to each, uh, citizen. Uh, additional carts are provided as well for $5 a month according to this. It does mention in paragraph two that collection carts owned by the city will be deployed for that authority, but as the mayor mentioned in the work session, the city does not own or deploy any carts as that services. All trash collection services are by contract in the city, and so we've, in addition to the red line, we struck that sentence as well.
Any discussion from the council?
Will they also provide the recycling at Kids Park?
That will be coming with a future contract that this council chooses to move forward with that, yeah. They are already doing the two up there, the two big ones, is the county, the West End, Reston My Waste Probe. They are talking about doing a, what they call a charm site, like they just recently opened in Fairhope, which will take everything, that will be a man facility, uh, if this council decides to move forward with that, but we're waiting to see that contract. Shannon, have you heard anything on that charm facility?
Yeah. That answers your question.
Yeah. All right, any other business coming for the council tonight? Motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, Kurt, I cut you off too quick. Excuse me.
Just, uh, uh-